Welcome to our Aiken City Council meeting, as we call it to order, this evening. Thank you for being with us, I appreciate it very much. And as we go through our agenda, if you'd like to speak on any particular item, you may do so. Just raise your hand, let us know, and then come over here and give us your name, please, if you would. At this time, we'll have council prayer, and then the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Almighty and gracious God, giver of every good gift and perfect gift, we come to you this evening with gratitude and praise in our hearts for the many blessings you have bestowed on our community. We give you thanks for the opportunities to serve our community, and we are thankful for our citizens who are here with us this evening. We're also grateful for all of those citizen volunteers who give us so willingly of their time in serving our city in so many important ways. Tonight, we ask for your guidance and wisdom as we conduct the business of the city in service to our citizens. Please be with us, Lord, as we discuss the issues before us, and we pray that we will make those decisions that are needed and are in the best interest of our citizens and community. Lord, we're also saddened by the tragic, recent tragic death of interim city manager Roger Laduke's mother. We pray that you would be with the family at this time of sorrow, and that they would be, have a safe return to Aiken. For what is in your holy name, we pray, and we give you the honor and the glory. Amen.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
We've got something about Channel 4. I hope somebody's going to talk about that. If not, I'd like to at the end. There was a handout, some information on all of our places.
You want to bring it up at the end of, toward the end of a meeting?
Yeah, at the end.
Oh, sure, sure, okay. All right. First item of business of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of our work session of November 5th, 2014, and the work session and regular meeting of November 10th, 2014. Do we have any discussion about the minutes?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
I say.
Okay. Show of hands, please, all approval, for approval passes unanimously. On the presentations, we have one, presentation of the FY 2013-14 audited financial statement.
Mayor, thank you. Tonight, we do have the presentation of our fiscal year 2013-14 audit, and we have with us from Elliott Davis LLC, the shareholder, Mr. Tim Groh, and the audit manager, Ms. Nicole Hillman, tonight to present and discuss our annual financial audit.
Very good. Thank you, thank you again for being with us. Tim?
Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, thanks for having us. I'd have Nicole come up, but I don't want to make her any nervous, and she is, so. And I apologize for kind of getting a little chatty in the work session. I have a tendency, when we talk about accounting, to kind of get carried away sometimes, so. And I recognize also, if I talk too much accounting, I start making people gloss over. So, as I mentioned in our work session, we issued three opinions as it related to our audited financial statements of the city of Aiken for June 30, 2014. All three of those opinions were unmodified, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide. I think we went over some of the details of those numbers, and in addition to that, we have required communications with those charged with governance, which of course would be this body, and I feel obligated to communicate those with you now, just to kind of give you some perspective on what we did. Before we started the audit, we went through what we call an audit planning process, and we don't just walk in the door and just start, you know, whittling away at the audit. We actually do a lot of planning before we start assessing the risks as we see them of the city, and as they're described to us by staff or council or other places, you know, that we gather information from. Some of those are other governmental bodies, so we know where some of those risks lie. So we design our audit plan around what we assess as being those risks. One of the things we do is, we assess a level of materiality. We don't look at every transaction. Some people still believe that we actually come in and look at every single transaction. We just, we don't have the time, and y'all wouldn't, y'all wouldn't want to pay us to look at every single transaction. So what do we do is, we set, establish a materiality threshold, a magic number where we think if it was off by this amount, it would change your decision about that account or that financial statement. So, we, in addition to that, I mentioned when we were talking internal control. We assess the system of internal control as we go through that audit process, and as I told you before, we vet that system pretty thoroughly, not only just your standard controls, but particularly controls over, as we meant, as I mentioned, their federal funds. We felt we came out of that assessment feeling really good about where the system of control for the city of Aiken was. We did not make any recommendations to the control systems as they're designed. We feel like they're operating effectively. In Note 1, I mentioned, that's where your significant accounting policies lie, so if somebody else were to walk in the door, they could read Note 1 to your financial statements, understand how this, how this municipality records accounting transactions. As you can imagine, this document is, is full of judgments and accounting estimates. Some of the three particular ones, and I know Mr. Dour always focuses on pension plan accounting, certainly we take some of the actuary information, and we, we adjust to those numbers. In addition to the pension plan, the other post-employment retirement benefits, and then the, Mr. Ebner, I know we talked valuation of real estate held for resale. We assessed that again this year very thoroughly. As a matter of fact, management came back to us and said, you know what, we're going to, we're going to hit that again, and we're going to allow some more, which they did this year. So we feel like the value that's on the books, while it's the best estimate we have basically currently, and we feel like it's fairly conservative.
Thank you.
The financial statement disclosures we have in the financial statements, we feel like they're, they're neutral, they're consistent, they're clear. And what that means is, is somebody that, I guess with an accounting background could read those disclosures and clearly come away with being able to assess the city's financial We didn't have any disagreements with management. Management signed a representation letter that they gave us that's actually included in this document. As a matter of fact, any official communication we had with the city is included in this document, so this group can assess that communication. We're not aware that, I guess your staff consulted with any other accountants as we went through this process. We did not incur any significant difficulties as we performed our procedures. The significant issues we discussed, I'd say probably this year, probably the assessment of the valuation is always, is kind of one thing we spent some time on. The FEMA grant was the, the other thing that was kind of, kind of different and new. We spent an awful lot of time making sure our, and that, the one thing I'll say about your staff, anytime we have anything new like that, they came to us and, on the front end and said, hey, we've got this, it's going to be unusual, you want to spend some time, we wouldn't spend some time talking about it, make sure we get everything, because, you know, a lot of these things are a real heady interpretation, so you want to make sure you have another accountant kind of look over your shoulder and make sure everything's being assessed correctly. And we felt like Kim and her staff did a tremendous job of making sure everything was reflected accurately. As I mentioned before, all of our, any communication we have is included in this document, and then I would say the, the other thing we didn't get a chance to talk about in detail, next year, the, the city will be subject to GASB 68, which will be the trickle-down of the state's pension obligation, which will be reflected on the statement in that position. We know that Kim's certainly aware of that. It'll, it'll have a government-wide effect. We're still not quite sure, from the city's perspective, what that obligation will, will be, but it, that is, will be a new accounting standard that's going to have to be adopted for the subsequent year. So, we thought it went very well this year, we're very happy. I, I felt like, you know, certainly Kim had to get a little bit more up to her elbows this year with Kami leaving, and, and things went very well. It's always kind of, it's, it's kind of good sometimes when you have some staff turnover, because you have somebody coming in and looking over somebody's shoulder a year later to make sure, kind of challenge how things were done, and I felt like those objectives were met, and we're satisfied with the results. And that's kind of my, my official communication, and I'll, I'll certainly open it for any questions or discussion.
Tim, we certainly had some questions and a good, good dialogue in that work session earlier, and I, I for one, just, just thank you for, for the work you've done, Nicole. And I realize this is your last year, being with us will change.
Well, maybe we'll see you again in a couple of years.
Well, I hope so. But, but thank you for your work, and I think we're, we're very pleased with the outcome of it.
As are we.
Certainly. And I want, we want to thank Kim and her staff as well for what they, what they do each and every day to keep track of the pennies and dollars and all of that kind of thing, and to make it what it is, make it come out so good. Any other comments?
I'm going to, Stuart, do you have anything else? I'm going to head back to Charleston if not.
Thanks for coming up here in this wet weather.
Sure, thanks.
On the whole business, the first item is approval of appointments and discussion of appointees to various city boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Beedenbaugh, please.
Mayor, thank you. Tonight, we have six appointments presented for council's consideration. Councilmember Diggs has recommended the appointment of Juanita Palmer to the Accommodation Tax Committee. Councilmember Ebner has recommended the reappointment of Don Broderick to the Design Review Board, and has also recommended the reappointment of Jack Hunter to our Planning Commission. Councilmember Price has recommended the reappointment of Brian Parks to the Park Commission, and the reappointment of Valice Cummings to the Design Review Board, and the reappointment of Lawrence Ogletree to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So for council consideration tonight are the appointments of these six individuals to these respective boards.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I move approval, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Second, we have second, any discussion? If not, show of hands, please, passes unanimously. Now, for nominations for next city council meeting, are there any?
Remembered.
I remembered, yes.
I have one, Mr. Mayor. Frank Wright. Frank Wright is interested in being reappointed to his committee. He does not, he's not sure whether he will be able to serve the full term, but his tenure expires next month, and Frank is on the Energy and Environment Committee for the city of Aiken.
Okay, any others? Okay. That one then will appear on our agenda next city council meeting. Item two, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to approve an inter-fund loan agreement and note for the installation of fencing at Citizens Park. Mr. Beedenbaugh, please.
Mayor, thanks. The ordinance is entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Borrowing from the City of Aiken General Fund Special Holding Account," as outlined in this ordinance, "for the purpose of funding the Citizens Park fencing project." This is one of our capital project sales tax III referenda items that included $500,000 for new fencing. At the October 13th council meeting, staff was directed to go ahead and solicit the bids and seek to complete this project before the practices and games and tournaments start in the, the spring, and we are requesting second reading to continue this, to install the fencing at Citizens Park. You may notice the bid, a portion of it is general fund, in our general fund for fencing at Stewart Field, and the remaining amount is part of the capital project sales tax.
Is that the reason for the difference between the 273 and the 317?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I so move.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. On the new business, first item, approval of resolutions to accept deed of dedication of water and sewer lines for the Holiday Inn Express on Whiskey Road at Stratford Drive. Mr. Beedenbaugh, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have actually two resolutions tonight. One is authorizing the acceptance of a deed of dedication from Naaman Aiken 1 LLC, the owner of the Holiday Inn Express, and also the adjacent property is owned by the Holly family, and both are accepting, or requesting, excuse me, that council approve deeds of dedications for the sanitary sewer and water systems for these two parcels of property. And spoke with our city attorney and parliamentarian, and he tells me that we can, or council, if they so choose, can accept both of these resolutions, I guess in terms of one, with one vote tonight.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I move.
I hope, Mr. Mayor, that we approve this resolution to accept the deed of the dedication.
Okay. Any discussion?
Quick question.
Does, does, when it references water systems, does that also include stormwater?
It does not.
No, it does not.
So this is simply sanitary and?
Water and sewer.
And water supply, domestic water.
That's correct.
Now, does this mean that the second property is not developed? Does this mean that the pipes, the water, that there has been pipes, water pipes and the?
They're installed?
Yes.
In the ground?
Even though there's no plan to, to build anything?
When, when the, when this initially came to council, if you remember, they told you they were going to build the Holiday Inn Express?
Yes.
And they were, they had plans for a future hotel next door.
Yes.
But that hotel is not yet built, and they don't, they're not sure when they're going to build it, but they went ahead and put the infrastructure in.
But it's just stubbed out, it's not.
Correct.
I do have a comment for the record, Mr. Mayor. There's still an issue on the right-of-way of Stratford Road Drive going in there. My understanding from talking to Mr. Grinton earlier today, and also Mr. Beedenbaugh, that that has to do with the stormwater permit and with de-hack, and it seems to be a slow process to get the right-of-way regrasped and cleaned up. So Mr. Beedenbaugh sent me the de-hack representative, and I'll duly have a conversation with him this week, so that we can expedite that. The rest of it looks beautiful, all the grasp scape, and you turn in on Stratford Hall, and there's still ruts and stuff showing, so I'll be working on that. So, thank you.
Very good, very good, okay. We have a motion and a second, show of hands, please, all in favor, unanimously. Item two is the first reading of an ordinance accepting the fiscal year 2013 to 2014 audited financial statements and authorizing variances to the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Mr. Beedenbaugh, please.
Mayor, thank you very much. The title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance Accepting the Fiscal Year 2013-14 Audited Financial Statements and Authorizing Variances to the Fiscal Year 2013-14 Budget Ordinance." We did obviously have Mr. Groh and Ms. Hillman from Elliott Davis attend our work session earlier this evening, and Mr. Groh just gave the presentation of our audited financial statements, and state law requires us to have council accept the audit, and we do this through an ordinance every year, and we have to have this ordinance in place by December 31st of each year. And this is first reading of an ordinance to accept this audit tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I so move. That we accept this ordinance, our first reading, and schedule the next public hearing on December the 8th, please.
Okay, we had a second. Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. Item three is the first reading of an ordinance to approve the inter-fund loan agreement and note for the sewer improvement repairs on Silver Bluff Road. Mr. Beedenbaugh, please.
Mayor, thank you. The title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance Authorizing Borrowing from the City of Aiken General Fund Equipment Replacement Fund," as outlined in this ordinance, "for the purpose of funding sanitary sewer improvement repairs on Silver Bluff Road." And this is, of course, as we mentioned, near the Public Safety Station 4 on Silver Bluff Road, just down the street from our water plant. We do have a number of, we do have money allocated in our capital project sales tax III expenditures to do this work. However, we must do the inter-fund loan. We did a bid opening on November 5th. Our low bid was J&amp;H Grading and Paving LLC of Aiken, and they submitted a low bid of And tonight, we ask for council's approval, a first reading of an ordinance to borrow the money for these repairs to be paid back from capital project sales tax III receipts as they come in.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second for approval?
I so move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. Item one, done the petitions and requests, requests to proceed with a pilot project for garbage collection with Tyler Sanitation, Inc. Mr. Beedenbaugh, please.
Mayor, thank you. As part of our recent budget work session, this item has come up, we were, worked with Tyler Sanitation. They have proposed a potential pilot project to service one of our garbage routes for a period of up to 12 months. Attached in your agenda packet is a resolution to authorize this project, as well as a solid waste contract, draft contract, put together by Tyler, reviewed by city staff and the city attorney, and there are a number of conditions that Tyler would agree to. Several of the key ones are listed in our, in the cover memorandum signed by Mr. Laduke, and they include that the Tylers will use fully enclosed rear-load garbage trucks to prevent loose waste from escaping. Waste will be transported to the Three Rivers Solid Waste Landfill. Tylers will collect waste from existing roll carts from our residents on the existing trash pickup day, and backdoor collection will continue for those residents that currently utilize this service, under the assumption that no more than 2% of customers have this service on that route, that they would be part of the pilot project. And Tylers will keep the existing schedule in place for existing customers on the route, will not collect any waste before 7:00 a.m. each day, and will abide by the same holiday schedule that city crews do. We will, our city procurement code does allow pilot programs on a limited, short-term basis, or a finite basis, and should council wish to, wish to continue this on a permanent basis, it would be, have to go through our request for proposals, portion of our procurement code, section 2-348. And anyway, for council approval tonight is a request to proceed with this pilot project.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion and a second, so that we can get this on the table, so to speak, so that we can at least hear from our citizens?
Mr. Mayor, I move, we defer the item until the next meeting, but that we take public input.
Okay. I'll second that. Who would like to speak? Okay, come up here, please.
Somebody in orange, I suppose.
And just give us your name, if you will, and...
Mr. Mayor, we need to keep this to public input and not get into finances and stuff, please.
Yeah. Thank you, Reggie, for saying that. Let me, let me say something, excuse me, minute, just a minute.
Not a problem, Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
You know, as, as has been mentioned, we're not going to vote on this tonight. I mean, we all agreed on that. But we do want to hear from our citizens. That's, that's the real purpose tonight. There's still some questions that we have about the city proposal, you know, and what it could be, and that kind of thing, and with Mr. Laduke out of town, he's, I think he's coming back tonight, as a matter of fact, so we, we can slow down a little bit on that, so. But we do want to hear you, and there'll be another chance to get this on the agenda at, perhaps the next meeting. I'm not sure about that, but perhaps the next meeting in two weeks. So, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Braun Pruitt. I'm an employee with the City of Aiken Public Services Department. I am also a citizen of the city of Aiken and a former employee of Tyler Sanitation. So I kind of have a working knowledge of the difference between what the city does, what Tyler does. Okay, City of Aiken already uses the rear loaders that Tyler claims doesn't waste, they waste, but when we waste, we can get on the radio and call, have a sweeper come behind us, clean it up. Is Tyler going to invest in the equipment to clean up behind themselves, or are they going to just leave the waste on the street? Also, Tyler operates with one driver, one maintenance worker. Driver has to get out and help the maintenance worker dump cans. With the amount of cans that we have to dump in the city of Aiken, you need two maintenance workers back there, somebody moving the truck from can to can. Is Tyler going to invest in that, or can they do it at $6.90? You know, they probably don't even realize what the city does as far as, you know, satisfying the citizens. A citizen calls up, they got their garbage out late. We have a small truck that has the same capacity as the bigger garbage trucks that can go grab that garbage and dump it for the citizen, at a cheaper cost than sending a big garbage truck back to, to do that. And it's just, do they understand our operation, you know, to make a proposal for $6.90? There are bigger operations out there, waste management, and I'm sure if they could do it for $6.90, they would put in a proposal with the city of Aiken. But I just want to make sure that the citizens will still be satisfied, and you do have these days, you'd have to work it to understand what happens, like you have a holiday. Most parents, they get the kids ready for school, it's their garbage day, the kids run the garbage out, that's a holiday, school's closed, and you get a lot of calls. Ms. Christine answers a bunch of calls, and, you know, we try to accommodate all this. As a matter of fact, I haven't seen a day where a person called in and needed their garbage dumped, and they didn't get it dumped on that day. And is that a service that Tyler can provide for citizens? I'm done.
Good question. Now, let me ask you a question. You worked for, you worked for Tyler before?
I worked for Tyler before.
When was that?
It was about eight or nine years ago.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're on the new contract now, but when I see their trucks, I see one driver, one worker. You know, are they going to hire these extra people, and can they do it for that $6.90 that they're proposing?
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Oh, sure, sure.
How long did you work for Tyler 1? And how long did you work for the city?
I worked for the city in February, it'll be five years. I worked for Tyler for about a year and a half.
Were you a driver?
I was a driver, but I also had to get out the truck in certain neighborhoods, they do the canv... They do the county, so like we hit Graniteville, you know, I would get out and help the other person with me.
Mr. Pruitt, did you leave on good terms?
Um...
Ask yourself, you don't have to...
No, no, I can explain it, I can explain it. They had a real bad holiday policy and me and the guy that I worked with, we got up 2:00 in the morning on Thanksgiving to get out there and we were done like 8:00 that morning. And then while I had my turkey in the smoker, they called me and told me to come back to work and help the other guys and we had never done that. And I didn't. They gave me the Friday off and that was in November and I made up my mind then that I was gonna leave them. It took me till March of next year to secure employment. I'm not stupid, I'm not gonna leave a job without having a job. But when the job came through for me, I gave them two weeks' notice and I stayed about a week and left.
And you're satisfied with the city service and working with the city?
I tell you what, they run programs for the city, Character First, different programs that city employees, they, they have a supervisor program now. I've even seen the difference in some of the supervisors, so I'm very satisfied with what the city does.
That's good when you see it in the supervisors, right? Also.
Absolutely, absolutely. They're understandable. If something happens to an employee on the job, you know, they get on the phone, they get them over to doctor's care, they take care of them immediately, no hesitation. They'll, you know, stop a truck and have it parked until they can get another worker on that truck, you know. And these are the things that I don't know if Tyler will be able to do at $6.90.
Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you so much. Next, who would like to speak?
Hi, my name's Kimberly Brown and I do not work for the city. However, I do live in the city and I read a few things on Facebook about this happening. And I do not, let me say this, I do not have any relatives that work for the city. I used to work for the city in North Augusta. I grew up in North Augusta, born and raised, and my first job out of college, I did work for the city and maybe that's another reason why I'm here. But as a concerned citizen, I would like to express my gratitude to you guys because y'all have done a fabulous job. And I would just hate for that to change. Aiken is incredible and they're incredible because of people like them. I have lived outside the city limit, so I did not have an option for about six years and then we moved into the city and I have been more than pleased with our service. And that just says a lot. I mean, that's what makes our small town great, I feel like. You know, if we start contracting out different services, I am concerned about that. Some of the thoughts that I had, I read, I read over the, the few things about the contract and me as a citizen, I can't really tell, it's, it's pretty vague. I know y'all know more specifics and, you know, understand that you're still working some things out. The number one thing that I would be concerned about is customer service. I don't even know the gentleman that spoke, but he's right. The customer service is outstanding. And another question I have, I do recycle, we teach that to our children in schools and that's important. And I know when I've had the other service before, that was not offered. So, you know, that may be a question too. So we take advantage of that definitely within the city. And what happens to, I understand that the pilot project, you're gonna possibly only do 3,000 homes, what happens to the workers that usually run that route? Do they stay on with the city or do they temporarily lose their job or whatnot? Okay. And also, you know, just being in, you know, I'm a physical therapist, I've been in management, things like that before, and just as a, a business perspective, I mean, when you do offer a pilot program like this, say they do the year, within that year, what if other companies come to you guys? Is it gonna be just a bidding situation? I mean, you know, I guess because if you open it up to one company, then you've got to open it up to all companies?
We, we would do a request for proposals where we would publicly advertise that the service is out to accept proposals from qualified vendors and then they would be evaluated and then council would approve one, one company to take the work on should it make it to that level.
Okay. And I really haven't read anything, you know, in the Aiken standard, anything about, about these issues. You know, all I have seen, and I'm, I'm a horrible Facebooker, I don't even really like Facebook, but I do it because of my children's school relies on that to communicate different things. But that is how I, you know, heard about this. You know, maybe as a concerned citizen, I need to come to the council meetings all the time. You know, it is harder for people like me that have young children, but I did want to tell you guys that, you know, everyone I've talked to has been extremely pleased. And I know this is probably a separate issue, but, and I don't know if there's a distinction between the garbage and debris, but when we had the storm, they were unbelievable. I mean, they made our city beautiful again quickly. It was, yeah, mass destruction. Anyway, so.
Kimberly, one thing, and I'm not sure you may have caught this or Stuart said it, but if, if this were to go that way where we would bid, get bids, the City of Aiken would also be a bidder.
Right.
I mean, available to bid, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to make that clear. If it...
Of course, you know, me, I mean, I can't see numbers in front of me and compare and whatnot, but I'm a very pleased resident.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Let me say something. We tell our employees all the time that they're doing a good job and we say it so often that it's, it's repetitive enough that it gets stale. But for a citizen, a young professional to come here and publicly say that the customer service is out, not just good, but outstanding, I hope you all hear that because we tell you all the time, you're the faces of the city. And for you to tell them that as a citizen, you don't have anybody working for the city means a lot, so.
Well, just like anything else, you know, unfortunately, sometimes the minority can be heard and not the majority. And I thought, I mean, I don't know, I thought maybe in this situation, maybe that was the case. I mean, because when people complain, you know, sometimes two complaints versus 100 people that are pleased, you know, sometimes the people that are pleased do not voice that and I wanted to come and voice that. I know nothing about garbage, I'm a physical therapist, but I know that I'm very pleased. Okay?
So much.
I know how to create and I know how to recycle. Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, Kimberly. Next?
Good evening, how y'all doing? My name is Ryan Butler, I'm a citizen of the City of Aiken. And I'm, I drive one of the garbage trucks and all y'all did this number right here, y'all said we would not lose our job when y'all vote for Tyler to take over. Because we can hold y'all at that. Now, in six months down the road, they want another route. Six more months, they want another route and we got, our garbage truck, our fleet depleted. I mean, we gotta go work for them in situations that we really don't want to be in.
I can say if, the, the pilot project will be limited to one route should it come to pass because if it becomes larger than that, then it would mean we would need to bid the work out.
And when they get that one route, that means it's gonna be three people, too many in our department.
Right, well, I, I think at this time, there will not be any of the, any employees, they would stay on the job, probably obviously other duties assigned, but there are no plans and there will not be folks during the pilot project released or let go.
Just working. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
There's a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I think Mr. Ryan was trying to explain is that with the city now, you know, to keep costs down, that he might be assigned to one route. When his route is completed, there's somebody else on another route that hasn't completed their route, he's gonna go on their route to help them finish up. You know, everybody wants to try to get done by 5:00 o'clock. And that's all the departments, that's yard waste, that's garbage, that's recycling. They all, as a matter of fact, on Wednesdays, they take a garbage truck to help out on recycling because that's a day where recycling has gotten so big. And with Tyler, when they're, when we're finished our route, do we still have to go help them even though they're contracted to complete that route or if they gotta be out there because of like a Monday route, might keep one person out there till 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night? And we've had those situations where we've had to get behind the garbage trucks with the supervisor's cars with lights on and, you know, so that they could see where the garbage cans are to get the job done, but everybody stays until the job is complete. So now, if we've got three city trucks working one route, Tyler working another route, when the three city trucks are done, they're done, they don't go to Tyler to help them out? Or when Tyler's done, they go home and don't come to the city to help them finish? That's one of the questions I think he was trying to express. You know, same thing with yard waste, when a person finishes their route, they call somebody else, you know, what you got left, what you got left, you know, to get the job done.
That particular thing you're talking about, about helping Tyler coming to the city, if, if that would happen, that has not been discussed as far as I know.
Okay.
And, see, there's still a lot of things that, that are up in the air.
While I'm up here, 2% backyards, that depends on the route. Because, you know, like you'll have a route on Monday where you have a lot of senior citizens live in a particular area, they get backyard service. Then you get these new sections where younger people are moving in and you get hardly any backdoors. If you go down to bypass 118 from Pine Log and Silver Bluff, they got an area to the left called the bunkers, that's 100% backyards that you need to, yeah, I mean, every one of those, that, that route on Thursday is like 86 backyards. Are they gonna be able to handle that? We handle it.
I know you do.
All right.
Next? Anyone else?
My name is Jim Reed and I'm, I'm the president of Tyler Sanitation and, and the owner. I understand the motion's been made to table it and we can go into all the questions and issues, but basically what I want to do is come up and, you know, if the motion is to, to defer it to the next meeting, that's fine, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, I was here. If I can answer any questions for any of y'all at this time, I'll be glad to do that.
Anybody have a question, right off?
I think the gentleman that was concerned about them not, you not being able to keep all of the, the persons that are employed now, is that a factor? Are you going to be able to...
Well, what's, what's in front of you is a pilot program.
All of the staff?
Yes, ma'am. What's in front of you is a one-year pilot program that I, I believe Mr. Laduke stated that there was a couple of job openings already and that he mentioned to y'all that, that the people on staff during the pilot program would be just assigned to that job and y'all wouldn't hire the employee for the opening. On our end, if this went to a full contract, you know, a year from now, where we were doing all the city, let me say this, and, and these guys that are here, they do a great job. You've, you've got a great group of people. I feel like, you know, up till now at least, I had a really good work, working relationship with both him and Sarah. They're good people, they have a great staff. We would love to talk to them first before we went out and hired anybody. So that would be the first group of people we would like to talk to. We do, do things a little differently than the city, for sure, but one of the biggest things is, is the pay rate is significantly more. And that's, you know, grown over the years, but our drivers, you know, residential drivers, yeah, it's one man on the bat, but our residential drivers make close to $45,000 a year, make a little over $45,000 a year. So the pay rate is significantly more than what y'all's pay rate is. But we, we would make every available effort to hire every driver that qualified for, for the position and that means a good driving record, pass the drug test, be able to pass the random drug test. Your folks already know the route, so they know the idiosyncrasies of this roll cart's tucked behind this bush, this guy has backyard service, so they would be the first people on the list that we would like to talk to.
Jim, I understand that your, your pay is higher.
Yes, sir.
But how about the benefits?
We looked at doing a healthcare plan around January 1st of this year and with the Affordable Healthcare Act, went to the employees, sat down with all of them that would, were willing to subscribe to the program if we had brought it in-house. For us to do that, it was about $800 a month, the cost share per employee, for, the cost share portion of that for them was like $250 to $300. They could go on the Affordable Healthcare Act website and get a comparable plan for like $175, so nobody would sign up because the website was a better option for them. So we did, you know, we, we sat down and met with them and it wasn't anybody who was interested because there was a more economical option for those people out.
Yeah, we really don't want to get into the numbers and all that, I'm sorry. I asked that, but I, I just meant in general, and do you, do you know what the city's benefits are opposed to yours or are they the same or just what?
I know the cost breakdown and our benefits are much more limited as a privately held company. I believe that when we spent the time with Roger going through the budget, I think about 52% of your cost for employees is allocated to budget, is allocated to benefits, where ours would probably be 15 or 20, maybe even less than that, I don't know it off the top of my head. Y'all do spend much more on the benefits package than we do, which probably offsets the big pay increase. I think our pay rate's about $13,000 a year more. And what, our employees have come back to us basically with healthcare and retirement and said, we'd rather have the money every week. So the extra $13,000 a year that they make, if they want to invest in retirement, they want to invest in healthcare, they've got the ability to do it, but they pick what they want rather than us picking for.
So you don't have a 401K gym or anything of that sort for them to start with their retirement?
We had a, and I don't know the number, we had one up till about eight years ago and nobody participated. Well, let me tell you that, out of the, with about 32 employees right now, two of them participated in it. The rest of them, when it was funded, they went down on about March 15th and withdrew all the money, paid a 20% penalty. So that was before I got here, but at the time, the owners at that time sat down and said, what's the deal? You guys are putting this in and there's a penalty being paid, you're not even using it. And the overall consensus was is just pay this, pay that as a salary and let us worry about our retirement and all of that. And so that's, that's the route that we went, which is why the pay scale is much higher.
Stuart, does everyone, or the majority of our employees here tonight have participated in the 401K?
I'm not...
I mean, the picture.
Yes, they, they do.
This is no contribution.
It is no, yes, it's not optional.
Right.
Yeah, the 401K is a voluntary plan that we have also supplemental.
Since he didn't have retirement, whether there was a 401K and sometimes some companies offer a match.
There was, well, the program I was telling you about that we had eight years ago, we funded all of that. Tyler Sanitation funded that every year around February 1st for the employees. And then on March 15th, that money was available to them, all but two of them every year went down and withdrew the money and paid a 20% penalty. So they weren't using it as a retirement program. So they did away with the retirement program and gave them a pay increase that they got every week.
So you, you no longer offer it?
Yes, ma'am, it's not because nobody was using it.
This is vested employees, withdrew, the vested employees or...
At the time, were they all vested? I bet they probably had to be vested.
To draw it out, they had to be vested.
I, I, I don't know. I, I know there was a penalty involved, I think it was 20%. I don't know the ins and outs. You know, it was invested right here in Aiken, can't remember the name of the firm that handled it, but I, I don't know what their regulations were as far as, you know, but I know they had to wait about 45 days to get the money out before they could draw it. Now, there was a question expressed in regards to your level of service and if, if debris would be falling out of the back of the trucks and whether you'd be picking that up or if somebody called you after you'd, y'all had already run a route and, and needed you to come back and whether you could do that on the same day, do you feel like you can... Yes, and that's a provision in the contract that was proposed. It was that we, we would get a complaint from your solid waste department service and that we would have to respond to that and have that resolved in 24 hours. Typically, we try to have that done by the end of the day. As far as waste falling behind the truck, we expect the crew on the truck to clean that up when it falls out before they pull onto the next stop. If it's something crazy that happens, then you could call back and we could send somebody out. Typically, we've got a broom or something like that on the back of the truck where they can clean it up right there while they're there than, rather than go back.
Any other questions? Okay, any other questions? Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jim.
I didn't know if you wanted to hear it from me next week or if this was the appropriate time now?
No, right now.
Okay.
Well, as long as we don't get into cost information.
Yeah.
I have a concern, uh, Tim, my concern, this is Reggie's concern, I discussed it with several council members. Uh, I think we need to be careful getting down too much detail tonight, 'cause I know Mr. Ladue has talked with both of you in detail about that. And I would be concerned if the, any questions come up that they get answered with the right dollars and cents. We know six ninety is right, 'cause that's what's written down, but all of the background of that is not written down in here. So I think we need to be careful of comparing numbers.
Yeah.
Bear with me for one second, let me just, without getting into specific numbers, you know, we have a gap in our budget, we're trying to make that up. Uh, and in discussions that we've had offline, we basically decided to defer this because, uh, you know, the city people were gonna come up with some enhancements to their program that they could operate more efficiently. And that's why we're not gonna, uh, proceed with allowing the pilot program to go forward. But in fact, if you look at it, if, you know, we went through the nail-pulling exercise about three years ago with the zero-based budgeting, I mean, nothing came out of that one, obviously. And here we are, you know, if in fact there's potential savings that the city can have, I agree, let's apply that, but let's apply it along with the pilot program and then you can get a real, uh, you know, comparison between what is effective and what is not. Otherwise, I mean, if we just continue, if, uh, the city says, you know, they can work more efficiently, reduce the costs, that's the numbers that we should be comparing them against when we do the pilot program, not the old way of doing things. That was it, just a little philosophy.
I just wanted, before we got off cost, to make a general statement about, you know, we run it as one organization, not as three separate divisions. So it's very difficult to dial down on the cost, um, and figure out exactly what that garbage service costs, 'cause there's so much extra customer service stuff that's in there. Uh, Braun made a great point that, you know, when recycling's behind, we'll shut garbage trucks down to go help recycling, uh, same way with yard debris. It's all kind of run as one big thing. So to compare apples to apples is very difficult. Um, I can tell you that my staff worked hard and presented to Roger Thursday some numbers, um, very competitive numbers. Uh, he had some more questions, we worked over the weekend and, and still think we've got some pretty good numbers, where the, uh, our cost is, uh, very close to six ninety. Um, you know, it's a question of service, in my opinion. Uh, and as I've grown through my, uh, employment with the city, you know, I've always been taught that we're to bring options to the city council and, and you guys make the decision that's in the best interest of the citizens. The reason I got up tonight was because I felt like you weren't getting options. Um, you've had a vendor come in and rather aggressively say he can save you some money, uh, and it's been kind of fast-tracked to a vote, so I'm glad to see we postponed it for a couple of weeks and, uh, let's make the right decision one time. Uh, but I think there's a lot of extra stuff in there that you need to be aware of. Um, it's very typical for these private vendors to come in with a very low number, um, and try to get municipalities out of the garbage business, and that's because of the barriers to re-entry. Um, once we leave the garbage business, it will be very difficult to buy a full fleet, five, six trucks and hire thirty employees. Um, now, that's gonna happen over a period of time, obviously. Um, but I, I think that the number that they're projecting will increase after, uh, we're gone. And the service issues aren't things like picking up a little litter that spilled out of the back of the truck, they're more like, uh, you know, filling a hole for S E and G who pulled a telephone pole out and left the hole there and it, we, we fill a lot of gaps, I guess is what I'm saying. Uh, we build fences, we clean gutters on the houses in Crosland Park that we own, uh, all of that stuff has a cost. Um, and, and what my staff did over the weekend was try to pull all those costs out of the garbage budget. We went and looked at every single expenditure and said, does this have anything to do with running a garbage truck and, and flipping cans? And if it didn't, you know, we moved it out. Uh, and then that's how we got to these competitive numbers. Um, on a separate issue, I think that the, the calling this a pilot program is kind of a misrepresentation. We, it's a very mature business, we've been in it for a long time. Um, I'm not sure what we're studying. Um, there's, there's no measurement factors, you know, there's nothing in the contract that says at the end of the year, we're gonna rate you A, B, C, D on these factors. Um, I predict Tyler or Sanitation will do a wonderful job for us at six ninety. We've had a great relationship with Joe and Jim over the years. Uh, that's a fair price for the work they're gonna do. I think a year from now, we'll be right back here with the same questions of whether you wanna keep the service, the extra service levels high, or whether you don't. And that's, that's gonna be the real cost difference between our operation and theirs, is, is what the most recent, uh, generation of numbers say. And we do have a, a, a good retirement program, a pension. Uh, that's, that's why most of my folks are here in their yellow and orange shirts tonight, they're worried. Um, I've got a guy, I won't call him by name, but he's sitting back there, that's trying to get to twenty-five years of service. He's just too young, he's not gonna make it, he's twenty, got twenty-three years of, uh, or no, he's got, he's trying to get to fifty-five and he's only fifty-three. He's got thirty years of servicing, so when we go to start laying people off, or not laying them off, but transitioning them to Tyler's, you know, he's gonna lose that retirement done. Um, I mean, he'll get what he has vested in the system, but he won't make it to full retirement. So they're, they're, they're very concerned about, uh, their benefits, their healthcare benefits and their, and their retirement. Um, and I just, I, I feel like you need to get options. I'm, I, I want you to do whatever's best for the citizens, Aiken, if that's sub this thing out, then, um, you know, I, I'd be glad to be helping you transition. But I don't see where you presented a lot of options on this one at this time.
Tim, let me just say, I, I made the motion, motion to defer because I think, as you rightly pointed out, we need more information. We, we had, uh, we had one meeting, we had a, heard a good presentation, um, that was, that was half of it. We had hoped to have another meeting last Tuesday, but as you know, circumstances prevented that. More than likely, a lot of questions would have been asked at that meeting that, um, would have put us in a different position here. Um, but I thank you and your folks for, for giving us the other side of the story, the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey used to say. Um, we, I think we all recognize that we need to go back and ask some questions. Um, uh, it's a pilot program only because it's, it's gonna, it's designed to, to, to last for one year. Uh, you make an excellent point, how do you measure effectiveness? Um, and, and that's a, that's a good point. So, um, I, I think we've got some questions to ask and I hope that, um, between now and the next meeting, we will have a, 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 a meeting with Roger when he gets back and hopefully shake, shake this out a little bit better than it has been. Not guaranteeing which way we'll go, but you have to understand, the city's in a financial bind, it's.
Absolutely.
You know, it's our fault, not yours. Um, but there are some issues that we need to address and there's some difficult and challenging issues. Um, I, I can't imagine that anybody with twenty-three years in service needs to worry about making it to twenty-five. That's not a guarantee, but I just can't imagine that's gonna be an issue for this council. I, I, I just don't think that, uh, well, let's be positive, the compassion that we would have for our employees is strong, so I don't think we'd, we'd want that to happen, so. But you're right, and I've, I've personally witnessed, uh, public services doing things that were not in your job description, but you, you, uh, and you've, you've made a lot of, uh, points in my district recently and some of the issues I've asked you to handle and you've gone above and beyond it. And, and that's an issue that we need to deal with because you provide a concierge service, quite honestly, um, uh, with, with, uh, garbage, recycling and yard waste. So, um, we, we know what you and your folks do.
Tim, uh, don't misconstrue what I said, that I was dissatisfied. As a matter of fact, you know I've several times personally thanked you for, you know, the great work that the people are doing. It's just that, you know, it was my impression that we were gonna take a different look at it. I didn't really realize we're gonna try to not talk numbers and defer.
Right. Well, I, I, I hope that my, that myself and my staff are considered experts in this field, I mean, we've been doing it for fifteen years. Uh, we wrote the city ordinance for the city solid waste. Um, you know, our attorneys, uh, put a few extra whereas's in there for us and stuff, but, I mean, we wrote it and we've administered it, we've been part of every decision that's been made, um, you know, helping our bosses provide the information to, to this body to make the right choices for the citizens. Not so much with this, you know, uh, we, we were told not to come to the budget meeting and the contracts were drawn up. Uh, you know, I saw the contract Thursday as we finished our meeting, you know, it'd already been drawn up and sent to the lawyers. We just felt like it's been fast-tracked and, you know, we've got some input that may help you make the right decision. We'd be glad to provide that at any time.
Tim, we're not gonna rush this. We're not gonna rush it to the point where we leave something out that we know we ought to have in there. I mean, the contract, I'll go back and look at it myself again.
Right.
But, uh, th- this has been a rush, a rush job so far. We have rushed this thing quite a bit. I mean, what, two weeks ago, we heard about this thing for the first time. And here we are, you know, talking about, that's why we, that's why we decided not to take a vote, certainly this time, because we wanted to hear and thank you and, and thank, thank the guys, girls and, and boys out there. Thank you for the job you do. We know you do a super job. I don't see how anybody could do a better job.
Well, I think there was some, some excitement about saving the taxpayers some money, you know, and that's.
Especially through that storm, my goodness.
That's what we wanna do.
That was something. They're a super job. Thank you, Tim.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Have a comment?
Well, I'll talk.
You have two.
I'm Joe Lewis and I live in the city of Aiken. Um, first of all, I'd like to say that as a resident, I've never had any trouble whatsoever when having my garbage picked up. It's always picked up on time, it's always done very professionally, and I've never had any issue whatsoever with it. Fifteen years ago, though, I was a resident of the county. And I was a county resident for, um, at least eleven years. And during that time, Tyler Sanitation was my service provider. And throughout that time, they did an exceptional job. It was always professional, I never had any issues whatsoever, and I knew that if I did, I could have always called and it would have been taken care of. So I don't think there's any issue, uh, that I can bring up tonight regarding service either way, they're both have been very professional. What I understand is that the city is looking for ways to cut expenses and solid waste collection has certainly been an area where it's hard to control cost, and I can understand that. So I look at it from the standpoint of if this move as a pilot project will save the city money and save our city taxpayers and residents money and we can receive the same level of service or better, then I feel it's something that we need to consider. The issue to me is strictly who can do it more efficiently and who can do it at the least cost without sacrificing service. I think that's, that is the issue. On a separate note, I would like to just give a personal reference, character reference for Tyler's. Uh, I will tell you that that company has been in existence for sixty-five years and today, at the cost of a new garbage truck at about a quarter of a million dollars, you don't make it sixty-five years in today's world if you're not doing something right. I have bank, had the privilege, and I'm sincere when I say a privilege, of banking this company for at least twenty-five years. Not too many bankers in this town can say they've banked any company for twenty-five years, but I have. And during that time, I worked with Joe and Lyle Tyler and it was a very professional relationship. They always did what they said they would do, with never any issues on professionalism or any, uh, any standard, everything was always above board and very professional. And for the last seventeen years, I've known Mr. Reed, who now owns the company. They're all hard-working people, they're very dependable, as I said, they're very professional, they do what they say. And, um, that's all I wanted to say, is that I, I, I think they're a very professional company and either way you decide to go, I mean, that's your choice. But at the end of the day, I think it's what can save the city the most money, what can save the taxpayers the most money and, and not, um, um, cause a fault with, uh, service or slip in service. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
We have.
Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Richard Johnson. Wasn't expected to make a statement, but after listening to, uh, others, I want to just say that, number one, the city of Aiken Sanitation Department does an excellent job. There are three trucks that travels my street. The garbage truck, the trash truck, the one that picks up the heavy trash and the, 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 the other one.
Recycling.
That, that recycling. And they come on a regular schedule, always, uh, picking up on time. And I, I can understand there's, where, where there's, uh, uh, where there's a need for reducing costs, but I would suggest that you consider closely not just reduce costs and sacrifice quality. I would hope that you take all that into consideration and that this, the city, Aiken employees, if, if you transfer them to another group, would they be transferred with the same salary or would their salary be changed or reduced? Those are things that I hope you would, hope that you would consider. And, uh, I'm, I'm pleased, extra pleased with, with the service that, that the city gives. And I can, I can, I can listen to the trucks coming by, I know that, that the schedule of trucks, so I know when to put my garbage out, know when to have everything in place and they gonna, they gonna be by there. So Tyler may do the same thing, but we have some, a good working, uh, organization and if you can work out something financially, I would suggest that you consider that as opposed to going to a, a different system. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Don't be nervous.
Oh. I'm Sarah Herring, as y'all know, I'm, I run the solid waste department and just for the record, Jim, no, no hard feelings. It's all business. Um, I did wanna take a minute to say a couple of things. And one, I would like for council to consider, you have one group of people that make contact with every citizen every week. And that's these guys. Um, they are your face to the city every week and they represent you very well. These guys go above and beyond the call of duty day after day after day. You know, no slight on Tyler's at all, but, you know, I have citizens call me all the time that are elderly and, you know, we do bulk pickups by the road and they can't get it out. I cannot get it out of my house. Will you help me out? And we do. We go above and beyond in every aspect that I know of. Um, I think it was pretty impressive that the governor stated that when he first, when she first got here. she first got here, after the ice storm, we were the only functioning city three days later. That's them. Yeah, in a nutshell, that's them. And I'm, I'm very encouraged to know that this is open for further discussion at a different time, because Tim and myself both have had a lot of ideas on reducing costs and increasing the revenue. And hopefully, this gives us a chance to get some of those ideas to the table. Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, sir.
Hello.
Hello, everyone.
Good. My name is Beverly Forrest. I work for the city of Aiken, all of my peers. What I would like to say is, I don't stay in the city limits. I stay outside the city limits, and I have Tyler for garbage service. Okay, if Tyler can save the city, do it for $6.90 for the city, is he gonna drop the prices for us as his own company? See what I'm saying? If he could do, if he could do it for the city for $6.90, and I pay $18 a month, why he can't drop mine down if he gonna do the city a lot cheaper? Understand what I'm saying? I mean, do y'all understand what I'm saying? I mean, it's only fair.
Well, I think he said, he's really said in all fairness, it's apples and oranges. In the city, he has to go, what, 10, 20 feet sometimes from one house to another. In the county, he might have to go 200 feet. So that's why we didn't wanna get into details and too many details with the money.
Okay, and then like he, like I'm saying, let me express my opinion. Like I said, I have them. One morning they came by, they dropped the garbage. He claims that they picks it up. They do not. I had to run the truck down for them to come get the garbage up. One morning, they waste paint in front of my door, and I called the lady, and she just told me to put some salt or sand stuff on it in it to go away. We don't do that in the city. If we waste paint on the ground, we get the sand stuff and put it on there, and then we get the sweeper to come back and get it up. They say they have brooms on the back of their truck. They don't have brooms on the back of their truck, 'cause I'd be out there when they comes to get my garbage. And they, and they just, sometime they'll reach down and pick it up, sometime the guy just gets on the back of the truck and they drive off. I know someone who works for Tyler, and I know exactly what goes on with Tyler. I'm not calling, I'm not gonna give you no names, but I know someone closely that works with Tyler, and I know exactly what's going on. So they, they not, they not fair with, with he saying that, what they do, 'cause they don't clean up their mess, and I know this for firsthand, 'cause I got them as a carrier.
And I can't respond to that.
I know you can't, 'cause you, you probably in the city. I know you can't.
That's the point of the trial program. If, if they aren't picking up behind themselves, if they aren't servicing our people in the way that we would expect or want, then not only would they not carry forward beyond the trial program, but we can terminate the trial program before the end of 12 months. So, I mean, the point of the trial is to, is to, for, is to prove a lot of things. One, mostly is for, to prove that they can do the work at the price and at the quality level that, that we would expect. And, you know, in the city of Aiken, our people have high expectations, 'cause, you know, you guys have done such a fabulous job. I think this is our concierge service, we've also called it boutique service. I mean, it's an exceptional level of service that's given out. Ms. Herring referred to going above and beyond the call of duty. I mean, you do.
Yeah, we do do that.
And so, you know, that's, that's why you do, you don't rush into, you know, just making a wholesale change. You would try, at most, you'd try a trial, kind of test period, to see if they're even capable of doing it at the price that they quote. And so, I mean, those are the issues, those very issues that you raise are the issues that we'll be looking at to, to measure or to, or to try to compare.
Okay, then another thing, it seems, like I said, like I heard the mayor say, y'all trying to rush into this thing. So if y'all rush into this thing, and y'all give them, give them a year, but then the next year, y'all phase it in, and then what's gonna happen to all these people that's fit to retire or close to retirement? If they don't offer retirement, are we, are they gonna lose their benefits, their retirement benefits?
And that's, that's part of the, some of the question. I don't know how pensions work exactly. I don't think if they were no longer with the city, I don't think they just absolutely lose whatever was accrued, but I, I don't know. I'm by no means an expert in that regard. But, you know, we have been, it has been explained to us that if the trial program proves successful and council determined that they wanted to go to a, to a whole city private system, that there would be for, you know, for certain, you know, I don't know how many, but for some number of employees, there'd be other employment within the city, and then, of course, you know, Tyler or whomever would be offering employment also. You know, it's, it's very early. I don't think anybody can fully answer that question right now. That's part of what that year-long process would, would allow us time to answer.
But that's the kind of question we need to be able to answer. That's the kind of question we need to be able to answer. And that's why we, that's why we're not ready yet, you know?
And that's what I was going to emphasize, Miss Beverly. We are not prepared, near, nearly prepared, prepared to make a decision on this. There are too many unanswered questions. Which is why we're gathering information. There's still a lot of conversation that we have to have before anything is done to move forward. So I can say that without any hesitancy here. There are too many unanswered questions.
So I guess when we have our next meeting, some of our questions will be answered?
I would say so. We should be having meetings between now and December the 8th. Roger, as you heard, Mr. LaDuke will be back on this evening or tomorrow. But there, there are a lot of, a lot of questions that I have before deciding on what we need to do here. And Mr. Johnson stated it, it seriously, we're, we're all very concerned about costs and saving money.
I can understand that.
But you can also, in terms of costs and saving money, if you end up with volumes of people calling about services that is not rendered, to paraphrase Ms. Brown, customer service not being good, then you, you negated your whole effort of trying to save costs. We've heard from Mr. Lewis saying that he has the experience of Tyler. We've heard from you, from you and from others, but we've got to have some, some other questions answered. Costs, I think Tim mentioned that he's done some, he's doing some reassessment of his costs. So until we hear all that information, then we'll be more ready to make an intelligent and informed decision about this.
I think, I think Leslie said it very well. To me, service to our customers, your service to our citizens is more important than the price, to me. I mean, it's gotta be a balance. But it's just not all about money. It's not about money. It's, it's, it's about service. And some of the things that I've seen, and I'm sure Tyler does these things too, I'm sure, but I, I've been in Aiken for many, 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 many years, and I've seen what y'all do, put it that way, for years. And that's service. And if Tyler can do it that way, then it needs to be considered. But everything needs to be considered at this point.
Okay. I mean, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Harley, and I work in the city, living in the city since 2001. Also, I used to work for Tyler. As I was there, you know, I got hurt. And when I, when they paid for my, I need medicine, they like took it out my check. And also, you know, they really, really dirty to me. Just awful things to me. And I appreciate what Sarah done did to me, Ralph, Tim, Robin, and Bill. And I'm, I'm, you're working for the city. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next.
I'm Robbie, and as my crew will tell you, I don't talk in front of people, so when I call out, somebody pick me up. I just wanted you to know that it's mighty funny, people don't wanna talk the numbers when you got Tim and Sarah here that knows the numbers. The meetings, they don't include Tim and Sarah. They know the numbers. They know what we do. We pick up paint, pesticide, batteries, we do mosquito control. We do a lot of stuff Tyler's can't do. They can't do our yard waste. That's what I supervise. I can tell you right now, we run six grapple trucks. And we need the guys from the garbage to come and help us sometimes, especially this time of year. You'll see us out there late sometimes. And Tim and Sarah got this running pretty tight. If there's any savings can be found, they can find it. But I have Tyler's. They leave a mess in front of my house every morning. If y'all wanna come by, I live on Marvin Drive. We talk about running 200 feet between houses. He's stopping house to house to house. I pay about $36 every two months for him to go house to house to house and to leave a mess. And having one guy on the back, I can tell y'all right now, I've been here 12 years. You cannot run a garbage truck on our routes with two guys. You can, y'all need to come down to public services and talk with us, and not just have meetings with this man right here that can save you maybe a dollar. You gonna give up all this other stuff over a dollar? I mean, do you think your constituents are gonna wanna hear the benefits he provides? I can tell you right now, they're not good. I mean, really? For about a dollar? Do you think your constituents want all these people that's got families that came here to retire out of a job over a dollar, a quart? There's people out there that said they would even pay more to keep us. They can't do what we do. If y'all wanna come down to public services and see what we do, and everything we do, the E-Way's picked up, I mean, just, they can't do it, I'm telling you. Y'all do not know what we do. You got to come down and see, 'cause we do way more than what's on that paper right there. And I, I'll tell you, 12 years of experience to seeing this, I know he's been in it for a long time, but I know the service that he does, and I know what he does, and I'm telling you, he's, the love of money is the root of all evil. All of these people here, they're not here for the money.
Right.
We're not making good money.
Right.
I mean, I'm a supervisor. I could go work out at the plant with my daddy and make five more dollars an hour like that. These guys can go drive trucks and make five, six more thousand dollars a year like that. They do it 'cause they love the city. They don't love the money, they love the city. They love to serve their citizens. This man loves money. That's what he's in it for. He wouldn't went in the business if it weren't for money. We didn't go into private business. We came in to serve the city that we love, and we wanna continue to serve the city that we love. Please just give us the chance to do it. Come down to our level and see what we actually do, and invite Tim and Sarah to these meetings. It sounds mighty fishy that they're not being invited to these meetings. We got one company that wants to come in and do a pilot program, and we don't have other companies coming in bidding on this or even talking about this private program. It just, it doesn't look good from the citizen's point of view. I got people telling me that. It just, it doesn't look right. It looks bad.
We've got to do the best we can for all of our citizens. So I don't know, if you're saying what we're doing is it doesn't look right, I'm sorry, I disagree with that. We've got to look. We've got to understand what, what's out there. We owe that to our citizens. That's, that's part of our job.
When we're talking of bringing in a pilot program, and this is the first man that comes and talks and says, listen, I can save you money, then I think the next step should have been, well, why don't we call Waste Management and say, Waste Management, how much money can you save us? 'Cause you're, you're all over America and Canada. You have way more capital than this man does. How much can you do it for? He may be able to do a pilot program even cheaper. And if you look at his benefits at Waste Management, they're as good as ours. And I can tell you, how many of y'all is gonna go work for Tyler's? I had just about everybody on the department, they will not go work for Tyler's. They're not in it for the money. We're in it for the love of this city.
I understand. I understand. Very good.
And I just don't think that little bit of savings is, is worth the, the service. It can't be as good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought I was gonna want to catch you. Didn't have to catch you.
Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Nick Engels. I live in the city. I'm gonna make it real quick. I know what these guys do. I know a few of them. I know they go above and beyond the call of duty. But if there is a budget shortfall that, that, that the Public Works Department is not being properly paid for, I have no problem paying a few extra dollars a month to keep these guys on for the services that they do. Hey.
How much was that? $20,000? How much?
No. I think it was, I don't know the numbers, but it was like $5 per person shortfall. I have no problem to get, to keep these guys on for the boutique service, as you call it.
Thank you. Thank you. Next? Nobody, nobody else? Okay. Well, look, we really appreciate your, your input. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, coming out and, and I first came to this city 61 years ago, and I, I've been gone and I've come back a couple times, but I've seen you, your work, and it's, it's just amazing to me. And I thank you for that. You're really showing your character out there, too. And, you know, we talk about that in character ed, and how important that is. And you are the front line. Citizens see you, and they get the impression of the whole city and from what they see. And so, we thank you for that. So we, we're gonna dig deep in this, and it could be possibly that it's not the next meeting. It could be the meeting after that or something. Who knows what we are gonna decide as a council? So, but we needed to have this meeting, and we needed to have your views. And if there's anything else you think about, you know, let us know. Okay, we'll move on then to the next subject. If you want to stay, you can. Having more fun. Character education at work. Let's see, where were we? We're down at number three, I think.
Two.
Two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You're exactly right. Approval of the mutual aid agreement with Lexington County Sheriff's Department.
Mayor, thank you. We did receive a letter from the Lexington County Sheriff's Department's General Counsel, and they have a new mutual aid agreement for council to consider. It has been approved by their county council and reviewed at their level. And as we have with other, many other jurisdictions adjacent to us, we do have a number of these mutual aid agreements, and here is one tonight. We're requesting council's approval of the renewal of this agreement with the Lexington County Sheriff's Department.
Do we have a motion, a second for approval?
I so moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor? unanimous. Item three, approval to request development conceptual plans and cost estimates for Eustace Park Senior slash Union, Youth Center. Excuse me.
Sure. Mayor, thank you. We did have Clemson come, as, as you know, last week, and, or actually, I guess now almost two weeks ago, and give a presentation and seek input from the public regarding Eustace Park. We do, we've been working with Cam Scott on a potential, some concept plans for folks to review, and these- to review, and these concept plans would include any furnishings and driveways and exterior accessible restrooms, and we want to get some cost estimates to show council different sized facilities. I know there were anywhere from around 150-seat facility to up to 400 to 450, as well as a number of options, and we just would like formal council approval for our Capital Project Sales Tax Manager, Glenn Parker, to pursue these, to bring back to council once they're complete.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion second for approval?
I so move.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not sure what's being asked here. We're certainly not approving anything, I hope. I mean, I think we all should be clear that we're just at the information gathering stage with this action. They talk about the impact of increasing the size of the facility. We don't have a facility right now, so I guess what this is saying is, we're going to have Mr. Scott look at something that will hold 150 and maybe 200 and 250 all the way up to 400.
Yes.
What else is it going to hold? Is council going to get involved in that kind of discussion? Or are we going to be giving, being brought back a plan of a building, maybe five plans of different sizes and saying, pick one, or what have you?
It just, it'll give us sort of a rough estimate of what the cost would be for the different sizes of the buildings. Now, in terms of what would go inside the buildings, certainly that would be subject for additional discussion, both by ultimately council approval, but also of the residents and the potential users of the facility.
See, that's the key, and that's what I'm worried about. I mean, if you tell me, for example, it's going to have a basketball court inside, and we're going to hold 400, that's one kind of facility. If it's not going to have a basketball court, but it's going to have a lot of meeting rooms and go up to 400 or 350 or something, I mean, this is awfully vague. I'm not sure what we're asking for. Maybe I can get some help from somebody.
Well, let me just say that at these forums, and Glenn, if you want to come forward here and add to this, many suggestions were shared. Granted, you cannot include all the suggestions that the community made in terms of the things they'd like to see. You've only got $3.54 million to spend, so you can only use so much information to get these conceptual plans designed for the facility. So common sense will prevail in terms of a meeting space that would be there to host large groups as well as meeting rooms, and there were other things, Glenn, you want to list a couple of those things that was mentioned in those forums?
Ms. Price actually just said almost exactly what I was going to say. I'm not going to come back to you, working with Cam Scott and the Recreation Division staff with a facility that's estimated at seven, eight million dollars. That would be a waste of everybody's time. We'll come back to you with facilities. Now, you know, the 150 people will be a price, the 400 people, because we heard that number several times in the meetings, that may exceed the budget. I don't know yet until we sit down and run those hard numbers. But I could see this probably going back through the Recreation Commission, maybe before it comes back to council. Let them look at it, because they had a big input in this process also.
I'm not sure it needs to go to them, but, well, anyway, what else is going in the building? Are you talking about putting a basketball court in it?
A basketball court was mentioned, there were multipurpose rooms, they talked about the one unique thing at Eustace Park was a studio. That was mentioned a couple of times. When Mr. Scott and I, Cam, have looked at it, the one thing we liked and that we looked at, we actually visited the...
Croc Center.
Thank you. The Croc Center over in Augusta. I know we can't afford anything of that magnitude, but they have a facility in there that works very well as far as being divisible. You can do three or four things in it, you can open it up to a number of activities. It's got a stage on one end that works very well. On the other end, it's set up with a kitchen facility that works very well for that room. So I think that's the kind of facility we're going to come back to you. We heard social space, places for adults and seniors to hang out, we heard computer rooms, those kind of things. So when we sit down and do that, you know, one of the things we'll want to look at, and Mr. Ebner and I had this conversation today, it's not just building the building, it's what you're going to put in the building.
That's why I raised my question. I just want to be clear, you know, what the process is.
Yeah, we're not going to give you a cost for a shell. We'll give you a cost for something that'll be fully flushed out, and that we'll know, you know, the building's going to cost X, and this will be what it'll take to finish out the building and what we'll put in.
But when you come back to us with a building that's going to cost X, you're making the decisions on what's going to go into that building. I mean, you have to, otherwise you can't, you can't make a cost estimate of it, so I just want...
And that's why you get options.
I just want everybody to realize, that's step one, because council may say, no, we want this, or we want that, because we've got to have the wherewithal to respond. And with all due respect to the commissions, man, we need to get this thing moving, so rather than delay it for a couple of months going through the commissions, I'd just as soon have it come to council. We need to get this thing built.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Of course we need to get it going. We've got a lot of things going right now, too. Glenn, I think y'all have done a good job, and keep it up.
I'm just going to stay there, because I've got questions for the next one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I've got several comments.
Sure.
If you go back, you need to go back three years when we got our first project, Capital Project Sales Tax Manager, but I think it was in April or about that timeframe, we did some due diligence to get a Capital Project Sales Manager, and we listed eight or nine items for them to do, or that person to do. And within those eight or nine items, what's covered in this item and the next two agenda items, he's authorized to do already. On July 14th, when we voted for the Capital Project Sales to tax money to be available all at one lump sum, Mr. Ledoux had written into that, that that money was available to use and be developed as we're ongoing. It appears to me that we already have two ordinances that cover this work to be done. And a specific thing we had written in the manager's, if you will, resume, is that on a monthly basis, they would report in what they were doing. And I think that's one of the things that we still need to do, and Mr. Parker has accomplished that without a doubt. The other concern I have is it's a secondary fallout if we approve these tonight, and in my opinion, we've already approved it with two ordinances, is how when somebody reads in the paper, or they read this and say, oh, well, last night, they approved a 400-seat Eustace Park, or they approved to go buy some land, or they approved to do a Northside Park area. And so I guess my concern is that we are authorizing something that we've already done. And I think we have without a doubt the wherewithal through the ordinances for Mr. Parker and staff to proceed on without these.
Well, let's ask attorney, do you, are you...
I apologize, I'm not prepared for the question. I don't have the ordinances that you're referring to. I would have to review those. I wasn't prepared for that question, I'm sorry.
Well, I understand, I'm making my case that we have done this twice, and they're written down specifically, because, you know, I was beat up for some of the things I put in there, but it was specific items that he would do scope of work in this, do scope of work, get contracts ready, make a monthly report to council, and then once you get the building ready to go, we would approve the concept plan. There's a lot of work that all of the Northside, the Southside, the Eastside, and the Westside need to do on this. And so I think that, my impression is that all of that is there to be done, and the money's there to do it. There's no issue with that either.
Are you aware of this?
Can I address that? Yeah, I think in talking with Roger a little bit, these next, these three items are more than anything to keep council aware where we are. There was a gap in there where projects like this were sitting, and nothing was happening, and the intent behind these three memos that I developed was just to keep you posted and keep you aware that we are moving forward and where we're going. You know, we're going to talk about land. I'm not being authorized to go out and purchase land tonight, I'm being authorized to go out, and like you said, what's in the job description, start negotiating with some landowners, and then bringing those kind of things back to council.
Yeah. I think Mr. Parker just said, these are authorized in there, and we made that specific. Several of us commented specifically, I know Mr. Murray was directly involved in that with his experience in doing work. So I'm just saying, we need to be careful doing redundant, and then also, how is the public going to understand what we voted on tonight? And I sure don't want them to leave here, or in the newspaper, saying, well, we authorized a 400-seat Eustace Park.
Let me just say that the issue on the table right now is to approve a concept plan. Glenn may give us a concept plan that only says 150. With that cost estimate, it may show, the community is asking for 400, an area that seats 400. It may show based on the numbers that we can seat 400 in the facility. He's talking about the Croc Center, a multi-conceptual design plan for this huge room that can be used for multiple purposes. And if that can be done, then we will use that design plan. I don't...
What I'm saying is, he already has the authority to go do that. I don't, in my opinion, we don't need another vote to tell him to go do his job.
Okay.
That's my opinion, that he has that authority with two council. Now, we can go ahead and, to make things progress, I don't want to hold things up. I'm just saying, he has that authority for two ordinance read twice.
Well, let me just say that I can understand where Glenn's coming from, he doesn't want to do something that council may say, well, you didn't tell us what you were doing. And so he's telling us right now that he wants to move forward with obtaining the conceptual plans, and giving us a cost estimate of what it would cost to do an 150-seated facility with rooms or whatever amenities it will have, or 400.
I just think he has that authority already without it.
Authority to do what, Reg?
To do just what she said.
So he's going to decide that it's going to be 250, or are we going to decide it's going to be 250?
There's nothing in here that says what he's going to decide on. He's got to take the numbers and work backwards.
Develop some concept, Glenn.
And, I, really do I disagree with my esteemed colleague, but I will tonight. I don't see anything wrong with him keeping us informed.
And if the sense of council is such, if you would rather it could be listed in the monthly project status report instead of a standalone petitions and requests item, I mean, if that's the sense...
Well, I don't want to hold anything up, but that was the reason for the monthly report and what he's saying, you know, what he's going to do each month. And for goodness sakes, I'm one of the, the whole group here that's been pushing this for over four years now, and I don't want to hold him up. I think he ought to be out there pushing the pencils tonight, if he will, so.
I think the reason, I think the reason why we're doing this now is because Clemson just left here and met with so many people, and this, I think, is like, this is confirmation that we are ready to go on to the next level. That's the way I see it.
So, Mr. Mayor, I call for a question for us to move forward with this. Is there a motion in second?
Well, there is.
Yes, here is.
Yeah, we have a motion in second. Okay. The question then is, do we want to go ahead with this or not? Even though Reggie's saying it's already been done, do we want to go with what's on the paper on the agenda?
That's what the motion says.
Okay, show of hands, please. Favor. Okay, pose. Okay. All right, next item, huh? Glenn, you know, excuse me.
No problem there. This next item is for our Capital Project Sales Manager to, we're seeking approval for him to review land options for the Northside Park. We want to keep our options open for parcel size, and again, we haven't, we don't have any tentative deals or anything that have been made, and we understand that this will not give us any preapproval to go ahead and purchase the land. Of course, that would need to come back to council for any expenditure of funds. So tonight, this is a request for approval for the Capital Project Sales Tax Manager to review various land options for a Northside Park.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second for approval?
I so move, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the Capital Project Sales Tax Manager to review land and bring options to City Council.
Okay.
I second.
We've got a second, any discussion?
The Clemson, in their briefing, mentioned the 50 acres, I think. Actually, they made, mentioned in their briefing, 50 to 70 acres. How big is the area where Odell Weeks is?
Virginia Acres Parks, 42 and change.
Okay.
Citizens Parks, 120, Kim, 121 or 2, something of that nature.
Is that 50 to 70 seem reasonable to you?
Depends on what you want to put in there.
Yeah, okay.
I think Glenn's opinion would be, buy more land than you need right now, because the money we have right now is enough to get us started with the Northside Park, and I think we can look at doing maybe a Phase One. But we want to develop an overall plan for this park. We don't want to buy 30 acres and then in five years wish we had 30 more. So I think that's, and one of the things we've talked about, and it came up in the meetings with Clemson, is are we talking about one piece of property, or if the options came available, are we looking at 30 over here and another 30 or 40 over there? That became available, too.
Well, I don't have a sense of the vacant land availability or developable land availability in the city of Aiken, but my gut feeling here is there's not a lot of 50 parcel areas, or 50 to 70 acre parcel areas. And in your memo to Roger, you mentioned this land would not necessarily be in the current city limits.
Yeah, I would, I would hope you wouldn't hold me to staying within city limits. Citizens Park for years was not in city limits.
And Virginia Acres was not in the city limits.
Yeah, when I was growing up, I've told you all that story, but these things were way on that, we had to, you know, we would have to leave for practice or for our rooms 20 minutes early, because we were riding so far out in the country to go to these places. And to get a parcel the size of what we're talking about, we're not going to be able to find it. It's unlikely you'd find it in the city limits, and it's probably going to have to be in the coun, you know, I hate to say in the country, but it's going to have to be well into the county. You know, my recommendation, take it for what you will, but is that we might seek help from a professional, from a real estate professional. You know, it costs us zero to do that, but, you know, those folks not only will know what's available, both listed and, you know, through the rumor mill, but they also, of course, are very experienced, even expert, in negotiation and valuation of that property. And we haven't got the best track record in figuring out what to pay for property when we really want it. And so I would strongly recommend the use of a, you know, a real estate pro in the investigation. Take it for what you will.
The other thing that's come about is I've received phone calls from folks who have heard about this, starting the process going, and they have property that they're looking to move. And, you know, one of the things I've looked at is, okay, if he's willing to sell me 25, with the next person beside him be willing to sell us his 25, I have a feeling we're going to have to piece together two to three owners to come together with a sizable piece of property.
And I'm sure you recognize the sensitivity of keeping a lot of this confidential. I mean, it'll maybe an executive session when we next talk about purchasing of land.
Absolutely.
That's another advantage of using a real estate person as your lead man, because he doesn't necessarily say who he's representing. Whereas if Glenn calls, everybody knows who he works for. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Is that it? Okay.
Now, I think one thing you need to check on is what money is actually in hand and what money is available in Capital III, because the land purchase money in Capital III is below the cutoff point now. And I think council's going to have to have, I don't think, I know council's going to have to have a session in relation to how we're going to spend the money from two or three places. And one of the places is the landfill, and another place is Hitchcock Woods, and then also with University Parkway. And I think those are going to take some action by council to change how that money or where that money is used. And I think that needs to get on the agenda right after the first of the year, to see what kind of funds we have. We have very limited funds as we sit here today. There's funds available that we said we would use to do this if we didn't do... There's funds available that we said we would use to do this if we didn't do a park at the landfill. But we have to change the purpose and need of that money.
I don't want to get too bogged into this, but the landfill and the Northside Recreational Facility is one pot of money. Hitchcock Woods and the Parkway is a separate item. I didn't think he'd use the landfill funds and the Northside funds to do anything with Hitchcock Woods or the Parkway.
What I'm saying is, right now, the way the order is on the, on the ballot and is carried, we need to be sure that we have the landfill money dedicated to the Northside Park, which he said we would do. And then the money to buy park land on Capital Three is down like at item 21 or 22, which is below where we're going to get money. We just need to be sure that, that council is together and votes on it, how much money we have available to purchase land.
You, you also have $2 million at the bottom of 016, it's just titled, Northside Recreation.
Yes, yes.
We're going to have to make the decision on how to use that money also. We could use it for land, we could use it for brick and mortar, whatever, whatever you guys choose to do.
You need to read the words that are in the newspaper that were when we voted on it, because what's in our description is different than that. And all I want to do is be sure we get it on the agenda, and we vote an ordinance that the city attorney writes up, so we don't have a call back three or four years from now that the state auditor says, you used the money in the wrong place.
Well, let me just say to you, and, and I'm not speaking for my colleague down here, the landfill is an unacceptable place to build a Northside facility.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. All I'm saying is, we need to account for the money wherever we use it. And we have roughly about nine and a half to 10 and a half million dollars, if you roll both of them together. But it has different titles on it, and we need to change where that land is used.
And I think we've already been through this discussion, but.
But we have not voted on it yet as an ordinance to change it, and the city attorney's going to have to work on that.
Well, that's, I earlier spoke with the attorney, and I asked him, is there any way the council can go in and review the exact CPST III order of business? You know, technically, we don't abide by, the first one has to be done before we start the Sec One, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a way we can bring the Northside, was it the 2 million, up, up on the priority chart?
That's why I'm saying, right after the first of the year, the city attorney and the city manager need to work up the sequence of the money and how much money is available, and how we need to change the titles of them. I'm just, the cost accounting is what I'm doing now, so it doesn't come back to haunt you in four or five years.
But the law is pretty clear. You do them in priority order, as best you can, and.
Best you can's like a barn door.
Well, it is, but if you want to go over the list item by item, I can explain why we've, we have not done them in order. I mean, there's, we've been rational in how we've dealt with it.
Yeah.
But, but the issue is, we know we're going to get probably somewhere around $8 million less than we thought we were going to get. So you go to the bottom of the list and go up until you count to 8 million, and those projects are gone. I mean, that, that's what we've told the voters anyway, now.
That's not the system that the county adheres to, I think you're right.
Well, I, yeah, well, I don't know what the county does.
All I'm saying is, we need to properly account for the money now, otherwise, when the audits come up in two or three years, it.
Say in, in any way to delay or otherwise not allocate for the Northside project, you're just saying.
It doesn't delay any.
Make sure that you counted all your beans, so you know you've got enough beans to do the.
This has no effect on the Northside. All of the money that was, that is needed to do the, the Northside Park development, Eustace Park, that's all safe money, as far as I can see, looking at the list.
Make sure there's an assurance that when we go to do the Northside project, that the money's there to do it with.
It's there.
Yeah. I agree with that. I would reemphasize to he or she who made the motion, to consider modifying that motion to include a recommendation for engaging a, a real estate professional in this search process for land.
I don't want to do that.
Yeah. I mean, I think.
I will leave that to Glenn's discretion.
I think so, too. I think Glenn ought to have a say in whether we do that or not.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready? We've got a motion in second. Any more discussion? Show of hands, please, all in favor. Okay, oppose, okay. Item five, request for approval to work with potential partners for the Eustace Park and Northside Park projects.
Mayor, thank you. Our third and final request tonight from our Capital Project Sales Tax Manager is, again, related to our visit from our friends at Clemson, and we heard from several potential partners during our focus groups for these developments at the Northside Park and Eustace Park, and we would like to possibly work with these groups to develop MOUs, there would be multiple MOUs, an MOU per, per partner for, to bring back to council at some point, but we would like to just get council's approval to, for Mr. Parker to proceed with those discussions with these potential partners.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second for approval of this?
I'll so move, Mr. Mayor.
I second.
Okay, discussion?
Here again, I think we, this will be the third time we've been through MOUs. One of them was with Willa Run, and then one of them was with some other issues that came up during the Capital Project Sales Tax in 2010. And I think in the beginning, it says PRT staff, but we, we have to include our legal staff in here, because you're probably going to be dealing with other legal entities that are in the county, and for sure, the school board, and maybe the county as well as some of the other 501(c)(3)'s. And I think that we ought to go into them with the right guidance, so that we come out at the end as something that both sides of the fence agree to. You're going to get some sticky wickets when you start dealing with the county school board, as we've already found out in the past on some things we tried to do at Eustace Park. So I would really like to see that the CPST manager consult either our city solicitor or our city attorney, our appropriate legal action to help through these, because you can bet the other side is going to do it.
And I know he will.
When I was with PRT, Gary reviewed everything, anything of that nature, Gary always reviewed it prior to, prior to us executing it, so we won't change that practice.
Very good, very good, okay. Show of hands, please, all in favor. Okay, oppose, okay, passes, six to one. Item six, request for approval of a memorandum of understanding with the South Carolina Fire Academy.
Mayor, thank you. We do have before council tonight a proposed memorandum of understanding between the South Carolina Fire Academy and our public, excuse me, our Department of Public Safety. The Fire Academy has rearranged their region map, and Aiken is now in the center of Region Six, and they would like to use office space at Station Five for their regional representative, and they will provide all their own office equipment and furniture and, and web access. They will, they will not be paying us any rent. This will be used to develop classes and scheduling for the entire region, including folks here with the City of Aiken. So for council's consideration tonight is approval of a memorandum of understanding with the Fire Academy for the use of our portion of Station Five.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in a second for approval?
So I move. Go ahead, I second your motion.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? If not, show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. Item seven, approval to unfreeze employee positions.
Mayor, thank you. We do have two positions we request unfreezing of this evening. Both are in our Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department. One of them is a facilities assistant that will be a part-time position to work and assist staff at the Weeks Center, and the other is a building technician. This is a full-time position that will help set up, clean, and maintain buildings around our park, recreation, and tourism physical plan.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion in second for this?
So I move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? Not show of hands, please, all in favor, passes unanimously. Okay, issues and updates?
I do, before we address the Channel Four, we did receive our check today from the county treasurer for $1,382,753.54 for our late, latest quarterly.
That number again?
Payment, yes. $1,382,753.54, and that was approximately $153,000 over our projected amount.
And I assume we'll follow the ordinance that we passed back in April, how the money's to be distributed.
That's right, there is an ordinance that requires money to be paid for, to pay back based on loans that were made for other CPST III projects.
And also the loan for the water tank.
That's right, the Lloydtown Water Tank Paint Project that council just passed here recently.
Silver Bluff Water Tank.
Oh, Silver Bluff, okay.
Be sure and review that, that specific.
The ordinance?
Ordinance for that.
How much lower is this compared to what we expected, do you know?
It's actually $153,000 over what we expected.
How, how did you figure the expectation?
As our finance director, Ms. Abney, makes those projections.
Oh, that's okay. Sit down.
Unless he's a really going to come up here.
If she was involved, we know it's correct. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, we were given some paperwork at our, at our place when we started the meeting on Channel Four, and I'm delighted that we were. I know we talked about eliminating Channel Four.
Yes.
I thought we had some numbers. The Aiken Standard number said, Aiken Standard Report said we didn't have any numbers on usage, and I was under the impression that we did.
Now, once the, and, and it is still, the digital transition has not occurred, once we're, we would have rating numbers for Channel Four if they went to full digital, and we, our understanding is that's still not occurred. We, what we, what we've been reporting has been digital ratings on our YouTube broadcast, that we've reported that in issues and updates.
Well, we've spent the money, because this is in the package, we've spent the money to upgrade Channel Four.
Yes.
Why don't we try it for a few months, and, and then we'll be able to, we'll be able to make a rational decision, because we'll be able to say, there's only 23 people looking at it, and it's not worth it for 23 people. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to argue with that, but, I mean, we're just at the point where we're starting to televise council proceedings, and Channel Four is a perfect place to do that. I mean, I, I don't know how the rest of council feels, but.
I agree with you.
Given that we've spent the money for the digital conversion.
The fact that we've spent it.
Yeah, I think we ought to finish it, and.
Then I'd say go ahead, also, I agree.
Let's do another pilot program.
I, I usually don't agree with him, but I do agree with him on this one. I've had so many people call me and talk about keeping Channel Four. I did not realize how many people actually depend on it for information, some of the people that are not going online, getting stuff, look at Channel Four. So, really, in the, in the last two weeks, I've had at least six, seven people to contact me and ask it. We reconsidered this, and so.
I mean, I think if we do it.
I'm with this one here.
Let's run it for about six months and see what, see what the numbers are, and then we can make a decision.
Sure, we've reached out to Atlantic Broadband, but we've had no formal discussions, so certainly, if that's the will of council, we could certainly continue and bring back some numbers at a later date.
Have you spoken to Sam?
I've sent him some correspondence and have not heard, I've emailed him.
Okay. And Glenn, do you have your, your capital, City of Aiken Capital Project Sales Tax Status Report in an email format that you could mail me? I have, I have a couple of people that like to keep up with it, if you could, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anything else? We're adjourned, then.